All right, I see everyone here, the hour has arrived as well. So at this point, I'm gonna welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals hearing for Wednesday, January twenty second. Remind everyone that the meeting's being recorded, will be available for replay on the town's website within a few days. We'll start with a roll call. Dave Hadfield.
Here.
Chip Tarbell.
He'll be right here.
Uh, Joe Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Assumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Greg Demersion.
Here.
Kirsten Brown.
Yeah.
Hey, we do not have a legal notice tonight, there's no new cases, so Joe, you're off the hook for tonight.
Yep.
Then we get right to the agenda, and as is our custom, we've had a couple of cases that have asked to be continued, so uh, we'll act on those first. So if anyone's here for those hearings, they can um move on with their night. First up is case twenty-five nineteen and twenty-five twenty, Mark DeRosa, Aaron DeRosa, Seven Pittman Avenue. It's a letter from Attorney Brian McGrail dated January twenty-second. Please continue this matter until your meeting of February twelfth, and that we are working on revisions to the plans. Please also let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and file any decisions through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So looking for a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at Seven Pittman Ave to our February twelfth, twenty twenty-five hearing, and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to uh render a decision on this matter to October, um, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion, hearing seeing unregular voting numbers, Dave?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes, may I just continue? Next is a letter uh regarding case twenty-five eleven, that's from Attorney Brian McGrail, dated January twenty-second, and it's uh for the case regarding Michael Constantino, thirty-five Stark Avenue. Please continue this matter until your meeting on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, and that we continue to work with the building inspector in an effort to address the matters stated in his letter. We've had a positive onsite meeting in that regard with the building inspector last week. Please let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions until and including April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue our matter at thirty-five Stark Ave to our February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five hearing, and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to hold a public hearing and render a decision until April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion, hearing seeing unregular voting numbers. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes too, those two matters are continued, if anyone's here for those matters, they will not be heard tonight. Moving on to uh our regular agenda then, with continued hearings, starting with case twenty-five-three, twenty-five-four, twenty-five-five, thirty-three West Water Street LLC. Uh, Mr. McGrail, believe this is your case?
It is, thank you, Mr. Chair, after the record, Attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant. Uh, the applicant owners, Immaculate Dennis and Marvin St. Jean are on tonight. Our uh working uh crew of Andrew Jones and John O'Gran, uh and Peter Sandus, John O'Gran Site Civil and Andrew and Peter Architectural are also on tonight. Uh, we, we would like, at this point, to try to advance this uh project, there were a number of um issues uh that the board had outstanding, that I think I can address tonight and be specific in that regard, Mr. Chair. Um, if I may, uh share my screen.
So, the only other thing, Brian, is I don't see um I don't see a response to the DPW memo.
That is not, that is outstanding.
Okay.
Yeah, that isn't, we're still waiting on that, should be hopefully by next meeting.
Okay. So please go, feel free.
We're looking to hopefully advance this and I, but I don't think it's in a position to be closed out either way.
Yeah, yeah, given the lack of DPW memo.
Yep.
I, I think we're at a point where we would want to advance it to the point where uh we're ready to make a decision at the next meeting fairly quickly, if we can cover all the remaining of his time.
Hey. Can I share my screen?
Yep.
Thank you. So since um there's really not a, not a lot of substantive changes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of run with the ball and, and take that away from my uh professionals, because I think I can kind of give the footnote version to the board, and then if there's any specific questions there here, and available to answer those. Um, the, the adjustments to the site plan are uh very straightforward. Um, everything we had submitted before was um conceptual as far as shifting the building. Um, because um what, what we did is we shifted it to the east or to the right, if you recall, to create the patio area. But um Hayes had not done uh the final site plan in that regard to adjust the, everything that had been submitted was, was really a sketch. This has now been formalized, and this is what now had a result in some um changes to stormwater, et cetera. Sign off uh from a DPW, since we've reduced impervious, we don't see that it'll be an issue, but certainly uh the board needs that for the record, and so does the applicant. Um, so the project remains at eleven units. Um, and uh again, the buildings is shifted, a highlight on the changes, we've got proposed vertical granite curbing, as Mr. Tarbell have requested, uh be put and specified uh on the plan. Um, our parking, um, what we had talked about, that uh we have um five one-bedroom and six two-bedroom units for the total of eleven, under the parking requirements, it would be sixteen and a half. Uh, we're proposing fourteen and uh one handicap for a total of fifteen parking spaces, uh which is, I don't think, any surprise to the board, because that's what we had discussed and, and agreed to. Uh, when we get to the conditions, we can talk about how we deal with visitor parking, I've kind of tabbed that in the draft conditions, if we could table that. Um, and that's really the only change uh on the site plan. Um, and then, you know, landscaping plan kind of has some changes, which I'm gonna get into, but uh would you like me to keep going, Mr. Chair, or, or see if there's any question?
Keep going, and if uh folks have questions at the end, we can circle back.
Okay. Um, so next is the landscape plan, and there were some specific requests in that regard. Then what we did with the landscape plan, um, we specified option one on the fencing, now, if you remember, there were three options, the board selected option one. Uh, so we have specked that in as a requirement. Um, we um, there really hasn't been a lot of changes on the landscaping, what's been put in, Jim Emanuel had worked on that. Uh, so the real change was speci- specifying the fence, and also uh the board wanted a specification on the paver that would be used on the common patio. So he has specified a uni- uh a unilock beacon hill paver granite mist, which is, which is on the plan. Um, lastly, Mr. Tarbell had raised some concerns on these trees on the easterly side of the property, to make sure that they would be protected if needed. Uh, so Jim made a note on this, you can see, uh, it says C note for tree protection zone, TPZ, and he put uh a speck in there on how these trees have to be um protected. So basically woodchips, um plywood, and uh gravel and, and staked with cloth if needed, I'm sure Chip understands this more than I do, but that is the speck that Jim put in on that. And I think, in talking to Jim, um he really doesn't think that with how the building has been shit, uh kind of uh all this open area, he doesn't think there's gonna be a lot of impact on the trees anyways, but we're happy to protect them, just in case, as you were requested.
Brian, you noted that the uh that the pavers were for the patio. It's all also for the front entrance.
On the entrance too, yep, the walkway. Thank you, Chip. Okay. So that's on the landscape plan. Um, now on architectural. So what we did is really, you know, we've got these wire mesh here, so Andrew has now um put a speck on here.
We're not seeing it, Brian, sorry, point of order.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Much better.
Thank you, Dave. So you can see here, uh right down here, on the grates, you wanted a speck on that, wire machine got panel coated bronze. Um, so that is specified. The, we've confirmed uh that all the lighting is Doc Sky compliant. Um, and we've made a note on the plan, as Mr. Tarbell had requested. So this light here in the top right is the parking garage light, and it's noted that it is wavelength motion sensor. So the lights in the garage won't be on all the time. And then, what Andrew was proposing, um on a project of this size, he's actually proposing to incorporate the mock-up panel into the building as it's constructed. So he wants to do this in the, in the back left corner, and you can see the note. Determined location of mock, material mock-up, note, mock-up to be field-approved by town prior to proceeding in the full construction of the building materials. So what he's proposing is to kind of use this area as the mock-up, instead of uh constructing a separate mock-up panel on the building, if that's okay with the board.
Bill, Chip, that good by you guys?
Interesting.
Doing it.
Fine, fine with me.
Yeah, no problem.
Interestingly, you're gonna be bringing all the trades to do one little area like that. I don't wanna see, you know, the whole brick on the bottom, and then say, oh, the first third is the mock-up panel.
Andrew, you wanna touch base on that?
Yeah, we, we figured, you know, if it was, the building's gonna be constructed, if we had to do a mock-up panel on the side, the trades still gotta come, and, you know, assemble the mock-up panel. We feel pretty confident that you guys are gonna, you know, approve it, we think all the materials really feel cohesive, and that uh what we're proposing will uh be followed along, so we just figured it, it cuts down on needing to, you know, build the frame, build the whole mock-up panel, and uh this could be a good start and a good, easy way to review it, though creating a facade.
But you know what I'm saying, Andrew, I don't wanna see all the brick on, and then say, oh, the first third is part of the mock-up panel, cause if we don't, you know, I don't wanna get to a point where you're ripping tons off because something's wrong.
Well, that, y- yeah, yeah, totally, that's kind of why I boxed this one area, I figured, keep it nice and simple, six feet out each side roughly, um, just enough to be able to get that window, that's why we chose this back left-hand side corner, so you can see the trim and how that all meets, so.
Okay. I'm okay, Joe.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Anybody else? Interesting, we've never done it, but it's an interesting approach.
Peter actually mentioned that he had done it, I, I don't know which project, but I believe there was a project in the past that um a few years ago that we did this, so, he, he was the one, actually, uh, I'll give him the credit, came up with the idea.
That's good to give your boss credit, that's a good idea.
Andrew, what's the over/under that we're actually gonna approve it?
I don't know. You can let me know.
You feel pretty confident.
I think so too, I think uh the, all these colors and materials really come together nicely.
And these are down at the uh town hall, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Joe, thank you, Joe, on that note, Andrew's dropped off samples of all the building materials. Uh, if the board wants to take a look at those, and, you know, next week sometime, they're in the building department, if, if you decide you wanna see them.
They're all there, I've seen them, Joe, cause I was down there picking up the files, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll probably shoot down this, next week, this week or next week.
Are there any concerns about uh material availability, or if any of this runs out and you have to substitute?
So, I, I can say for the most part, as far as like the James Hardy Timberline, the very uh big league manufacturers that seem to have it controlled as far as lead time and availability of product. Um, I'd say the one maybe concern, if I had any, was the uh thin brick veneer. Um, so, it may, I, I think it would definitely be worth, at least for that material, to confirm that they'll be able to provide as much as we're gonna need pre-early on, but besides that, everything else is very conventional and should, you know, uh, be available, so.
So that's it on um architectural. The next thing, uh Mr. Chair, is the board have requested I submitted the draft con-conditions.
Why don't we stop here, though, just for one second, Brian? Any questions on anything to the presentation today, cause now he's gonna get into draft conditions that we requested?
I have. Um, Andrew, did you talk with the structural engineer? Because I think I saw on your plan that the column on the garage was kind of in a funny location. It might change your parking layout.
Their placeholders, we typically, the, the plans aren't developed enough for a structural engineer, we never, you know, go through structural engineering till after approval through zoning, as it's, as you may know, a very expensive cost. Um, with that being said, we're gonna meet all the, um, you know, post into parking area uh codes, and uh we're pretty confident we can do that.
Okay, okay. Just making sure you don't, you're not gonna lose any more parking count.
No, the park, the parking count will stay the parking count.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I, I guess we were gonna get to it in draft conditions, but as long as we saw the site plan, um, what's your thinking on visitor parking, Brian? What's the applicant's suggestion? Cause normally, we'd see it on a final site plan.
Yeah, we'd have a discussion.
Some number of designated visitor spaces. I'd rather see them on a site plan if we're gonna agree to some, rather than in a condition, that's all, we typically see them, so, what you're thinking?
If it's okay, Mr. Chair, we can have the discussion on this right now.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring the site plan back up. Cause it, it's, I kind of, I put it in the conditions to be discussed, because we had kind of left that as an open issue.
That's why I wanted to bring it up now, while we got this new plan kind of in front of us, I think the rest of the conditions probably will stand on their own, but this one is typically part of a site review, so.
Yep.
So what's the thinking here?
So our thinking is that we've got um we've got a total of fifteen spaces, one is handicap, so that has to just be, re- remain open in general. So that could be used for a visitor who's has a, a handicap need for parking, as well as a resident. Um, we have to do that, so, so that means we've got fourteen spaces for eleven units. Uh, what we're proposing or thinking is, is that we would take two of these three spaces and designate them visitor parking. And then, uh, what my client plans I'm doing is pu- is assigning um one to each unit, possibly two to one of the units, and put a restriction on lease that they can only have one car, that's it, and he, and he's very comfortable doing that uh because of the proximity to uh the MBTA.
I mean, that seems reasonable to me, board members and Mr. Chair, and I was thinking one or two, two is fine. Um, just, again, to get them off the street whenever possible, and have a couple visitor spots designated. And, you know, one per unit with that designation seems reasonable, given the proximity of where the development is.
Oh, my math tells me that if you have eleven units and fourteen spaces, and you're doing one per unit, I think it becomes awkward, or I don't wanna hear that we're selling spaces or things like that, for one of the units to have two. So my proposal would be that we have eleven operating spaces of three visitors, and I would propose that the three visitors are very clearly marked straight ahead as you come into the property. That would be my thinking.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with two or three, as long as we get the lease restriction in there, it's how we've handled these in the past to make sure.
How many two-bedrooms, Brian? Are there any two-bedrooms, or are they all?
Yeah, there's two, there's um, the, the makeup is five one-bedroom, six two-bedroom.
Okay, so it's not like there's one or two where you could say, hey, one of the two bedrooms could have two spaces or something, because, you know. Yeah, I'm, I'm aligning with Chip on this one. Might as well just do one per unit, deed it that way, and uh have the three visitors. I'm, I'm good with that as well, and I'd rather, uh, even if it's a final site plan, next time, I'd, I'd like to see it on the site plan rather than a condition.
Mm-hmm. Marvin, uh Marvin, can you unmute, are you okay with the three?
Yes, sir, um. Uh, good evening, everyone, yes, I'm okay with the three uh visitor spots. And I'm, I'm very comfortable with doing the lease restriction for the eleven spots as well.
Right, so that, that's fine, and I agree with Chip that the, that, if that's gonna be the case, it makes sense that the, these three in the back, cause when people pull in, they're gonna hit them right in the, right in the face for the visitor parking.
Anybody else on that subject? We comfortable as a board?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing up, no other comments, yep. Sounds good.
Also, Brian, I, I had it in my notes, sorry, I'm not sure where it's, it might be on the site. I had it in my notes, maybe I just didn't update, electric service from the pole or transformer, that was confirmed, right?
Yeah, John can address that, that's why, John O'Gran, could you address that?
Yeah, um, I had discussions with the gas and light department, and um, they indicated to me that this site could be serviced by a um transformer mounted on the pole itself.
Well, transformer on the pole, okay, is that noted, or?
Well, we don't have a transformer on the plan, so if it changes, we're gonna have to come back.
Right, so just, I just don't know if there's a note anywhere on the utilities part of the site plan, or I just, I may have missed it, if it's noted.
Now, is there anything on there, in that regard?
No, I don't believe it calls that out, no.
We can call it out, Dave, we can.
Okay. Okay, I just had it.
We gotta fix, we gotta fix for the visitor spaces anyways.
Okay, cool. That'd be great, and that way it's noted, and then again, if something were to change after the fact, then you come back, but at least it's noted, so. All right, that's it for my notes, Mr. Chair.
Nope, thank you. While we proceed to conditions, Brian?
Okay. The board asked me to prepare uh draft cons- uh conditions for your consideration, and to um maybe promote some discussion on them. But I think um the main thing was gonna be the, discussion was going to be on the uh parking, which has now been resolved, but uh I'll share these, and a lot of these are now uh kind of, these are kind of, I call them boilerplate, because they're conditions that the board has worked out over the years um to kind of perfect, and they're just consistent with what you've done in the past. Um, in the first one, I'm not gonna, if, you don't, do you wanna read them in detail, Mr. Chair, you want me to kind of highlight what they are?
Especially the boilerplate ones, we used to the ones.
Yeah, so, so this is boilerplate that, you know, basically you retain jurisdiction for minor amendments, uh which is standard. Uh, two is, we have to provide uh um building inspector, police department, fire department with the people, contact people, um, if there's issues on the site. Uh, three locks in that the project has to be shown on the uh site plan, architectural drawings, and final landscape plans. This, four deals with um uh when building plans are submitted, uh that the board has to come in and review them, and uh we also now on this condition put that the architect and site civil engineer have to provide a signed and stamped affidavit certifying the plans and drawings submitted are the same as what was approved by the board uh for the file. Um, the mock-up panel, we talked about, so that will be revised a little bit, based on our discussion um uh tonight, on where it's going to be. Uh, six is the O and M plan, it has to be compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. And seven is, if there's any conflicts between the plans in this, this, in the decision, the plans rule, because that's where the board has the most important notes. Um, eight is, the applicant has to provide infrastructure improvements. Um, there's gonna be a, a new sidewalk on West Water Street, so that has to be done, uh as part of the project. Uh, nine is, during construction, uh parking is not allowed on the surrounding neighborhoods and streets. And uh onsite parking will be restricted to s- specific personnel designated uh by the project superintendent, but that's to prevent, um, you know, contractor flow over onto the uh neighbor, in the neighborhood parking. Um, ten is regarding the affordable units, eighteen percent, you know, there's eleven units. So one of the one-bedroom units and one of the two-bedroom units will be affordable in this project. And all ten and eleven deal with that, and twelve on the specifics, as far as uh the requirements with the state. Thirteen, signage for the project has not been approved, so if we decide to do signage, we'd be back to you on that. Um, fourteen is, we, we anticipate this condition with the DPW, they always like to have the uh I and I, the infiltration inflow fee on, is part of the conditions, and that will be more specific once we get the DPW memo. Um, fifteen, uh the board used to talk about um, you know, limiting delivery times, especially with a project like this, because of, you know, school. And now um you've gone to this, which is, prior to commencing any site work demolition into a construction collectively to work, the applicant shall meet with the police department, fire department, DPW, and building department to discuss items including, but not limited to, delivery times, sequencings, and procedures related to work, and the applicant should comply with any requirements of said departments. So that's where you've kind of handed it off to the administrative staff to work the details on that out. Um, and then, uh, the traffic advisory, as you know, is signed off on this project, they requested a five thousand dollar contribution towards uh to be used towards a future traffic mitigation at the discretion of the town. So that, that's a requirement prior to CO, and then I had discussion on visitor parking, which has now been resolved pursuant to our earlier discussion.
Questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um Brian, the TPW letter we got, the uh response letter?
Mm-hmm.
It had some responses that said, yeah, you know, the applicant's amenable to this, notes have been added to the plans, and I saw those. Some others say amenable as a condition. Have we covered all of those in here? Cause they would have to be conditions if they're not noted on the plans.
Yeah, Dave, that's why I referenced at the beginning, we don't have the final DPW memo. I wanna see where they come down on all of that, cause if the, the projects responded in a way that the DPW doesn't feel that way, I don't wanna go through all that tonight, if it's, if it, the point is mute, so. Uh, I've made a note of that, so let's make sure we just cover that when we see the final DPW memo at the next meeting.
Okay, well, assuming their, their response is to agree to that as a condition, then Brian, I would just say, you know, please make sure those are noted. Some of them were, are notes on the plans, and I saw those, but some are amenable to conditions, so if they're gonna be conditions and the DPW agrees to that, then it's up to our board to agree, yeah, let's put it as a condition, right? Or a note in the, in a site plan, right, either one, so.
Yep. That makes sense, I, I, I'll make sure I reconcile, you know, I've gotta modify these decisions, I'll redline them, and resubmit them, and I'll make sure that it's reconciled with the DPW memo, as the chair referenced.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to make, we might have to make some add-ons to the site plan too, so we'll figure that out with uh Bill Renault.
So, a- as a board, what we've been trying to do, and Dave referenced this on the on the transformer stuff, as much as we can get it on the site plan as opposed to in conditions, I think we're better off, and I think it's easier for the building department after the, it's over as well. So let, let, let's have a goal of trying to get as much on the site plan as opposed to a side condition.
Yep, thanks, Mr. Chair, and Brian, yeah, the rest of the conditions seem reasonable, and as you said, pretty pretty boilerplate, but I think it covers the basis, so. I read through the rest, and they seemed okay. So, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing seeing none. I think you have your task before you, Brian.
Yeah, and the only other thing, Mr. Chair, we submitted O and M plan, which is, is, you know, again, um, it's, it's really it's really um plagiarized, because uh it's, it's, it's kind of a, um, it's a working um O and M plan that your board has developed for projects of these. O and M plan that your board has developed for projects of these nature, of this nature. And there's no reason to reinvent the wheel, so that, that, what I've submitted is based on that, and, you know, and, and, you know, I'm sure the board probably had a chance to look at that. If you have any changes before the next meeting, fine, but it's very consistent with what you've required in the past.
Yeah, board members, if you, if you look at it, have questions, usually snow removal's an issue and those sorts of things, so if you, if you have questions or concerns about that, speak now or be ready to, to address them at the.
I looked at it, it seems pretty pretty thorough and, and where we're at. One, one question, and I raise it not in context of this particular O and M plan. But we have no governing body to actually make sure that the O and M plan is followed. So we do all this work, how do we know catch basins are being cleaned, and how do we know that they're signaled? I, I don't think we have a mechanism for that. So we hope that it just transferred down by building managers and it gives them a working basis of how to manage the building, but we really have no penalties for not enforcing it. Or ways to regulate that it has been enforced, or even being done. And I think of that not necessarily for this particular project, but even on bigger projects, so it's just something I throw out there to think about.
Yeah, Chip, I think in the past, what we, I think what we realize is a complaint-driven mechanism. That if these things aren't working, and a complaint is filed, at least having the O and M plan as part of the decision gives the zoning enforcement officer a tool to make sure that it happens going forward. It gives them the hammer, right? And hopefully, you know, that most of the the projects that are, are coming through have reputable owners that are gonna stick by the O and M plan. And most of the O and M plan that we, we talk about is is good, prevented, prevented its work for the property, so you hope that they would be trying to keep up with that for their own sake as much as everybody else's.
Totally agree, but just kind of an interesting thought.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've, we've got one as the enforcement officer.
A lot of it's belt and suspenders because, you know, stuff like the fire extinguishers, that's required by the fire department. And, you know, I think the main items, Chip, are like the landscaping, all the maintenance on landscaping, replacing dead, you know, dead plantings and, and that stuff that, you know, if ten years, people drive by and say, hey, the landscaping that looks horrible, well, as the chair said, you pull out that O and M plan, it's gonna be real nice for the building inspector to go down the building and say, guess what, guys, you have to do this because it's part of your, part of your special permit. Not a discussion, it's not a discussion, it's an enforcement order.
Yeah, which means I think we also need a zoning enforcement officer that's not the building inspector, somebody that's just looking at that type of stuff, but that's a whole nother discussion.
All right, thanks, Chip. Dave, I saw your hand was up next, unless John, John Ogren's got his hand up. John, were you gonna comment on that, or?
Yeah, I just wanna say, as far as the, the stormwater management is concerned, in the O and M plan, it does discuss that a report needs to be submitted to the DPW annually.
Thank you.
I know it says it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and, and through you, Brian, two general comments. The snow removal part of the O and M, it talks about keeping up with the storm and keeping things clear, and I think we generally have some language in there, I may have missed it, if, if it just about, like, you can't lose any parking spaces, right? If there's any accumulation of snow whereby any parking spaces are gonna be, you know, obviously, we're now agreeing to just one per unit and designated visitors. They gotta remove the snow, right? So I just wanna make sure it's clear in there. In addition to just keeping up with the storms, that they remove it to ensure that no parking spaces are affected, right? And the other one is just a general, as I'm reading the O and M, again, it covers the bases. I see a lot of mix of the words will and shall. In your mind, is there a differentiation on how enforceable anything is based on will versus shall?
I think they're interchangeable.
Okay, but in legal terms, they're all, okay, there's a mix of usage, I'm just curious. When I read this one again, I was like, all right, I'll ask. All right, the intent is that they all shall be done.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's all, Mr. Chair, thanks.
No, we, we agree with the, that has been our practice to make sure no parking spots are lost during snow events.
Yeah, and I looked at that wording, I just didn't quite see it laid out like that, so if we can just make that clear, that'd be great. Other than that, it looked like it covered the bases.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing seeing none. Mr. McGrail, anything else for tonight?
No.
Okay, you think you'll be ready in two, well, it might be three weeks at this point, what are dates in February?
Yeah, February twelfth, I think it is. Yep, we should be ready, hopefully we'll have the, we let the we let the town engineer know what our timeframes were.
Yeah, and if you can, you know, as you're talking, if you can remind him that, him and her that you know, having it by the seventh to twelfth is always appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask Mr. McGrail to put together findings that we can see before the meeting?
You hear that, Brian?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
If you can have them to us again by the seventh, that'd be great. All right, looking for a motion.
Public first?
All right, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to public comment, if you're here to comment on this application. Please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Okay, seen, okay, Brandon LaRoche.
Hello, thank you. I, I signed on late, so my apologies, can I just ask a clarifying question on the application? Was this for the Salem Street project?
No, it's not, this is thirty-three West Water Street.
Okay, so I have no further questions, thank you, my apologies.
No problem, thank you. Anybody else? Going once. Twice. Public comment on thirty-three Water Street is closed for tonight, pleasure of the board.
Jerry, move that we continue this matter at thirty-three West Water Street to our February twelfth, twenty twenty-five hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes, matters continue to the twelfth. You think after all those forty B hearings, I'd be ready to go to public comment? Missed that one tonight. All right, next up is case twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-two, L and L Development LLC in Wakefield Salem Street LLC. The project, proposed project at one fifty-four Salem Street and one fifty-eight Salem Street.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I believe this is yours as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant on this matter. One fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street. With me tonight is Nick Leo, who's the principal owner of, of one of the ownership owners of the ownership entities involved. There are a couple of things that I'd like to address with the board tonight relating to this project. The last time, we, we were before your board, there were a couple of things that we talked about, number one was to go before traffic advisory and get things resolved with traffic advisory to make sure that all of their issues or concerns were addressed. And I'd like to take that first, that has occurred. And we have been to traffic advisory, the Wakefield Traffic Advisory Committee twice on this project. First in November of two thousand twenty-four, and then recently, January tenth, two thousand twenty-five. We had to go back, because after the November meeting, the TAC wanted some revisions to our traffic study. Principally that when we had done the initial traffic recognizance out at the site, they took note at that meeting that the road had not been repaved at that time. So they wanted our traffic consultant, Vanessa, to do, to take a new look at raised speeds that they had shown because of the pavement to make sure with those speed increases that they alleged that the traffic report that Scott had prepared still worked. So we submitted a supplemental report in that regard, it was dated January third, two thousand twenty-five. It was discussed in detail at the meeting on January tenth. We also submitted a revised copy of that report to your board a while ago, so you've had that. Based on our meeting with TAC on January tenth, they have, for lack of a better term, signed off on the project, they issued a memo to your board on January seventeenth. And I believe you've gotten a copy of that, and if I, if I may, I would like to, I'd like to share that with the board, if that's possible, it's very brief and pretty straightforward.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so this is, this is it, it's pretty straightforward. If I can just read it quickly into the record, on behalf of the Traffic Advisory Committee, VHB has reviewed site plans and traffic assessment for the proposed residential development located at one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street in Wakefield, Massachusetts. This project was initially discussed at the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four TAC meeting, and subsequently at the January ten, ten, two thousand twenty-five TAC meeting. The following summaries, following summarizes the main topics discussed at the TAC meetings. Traffic assessment, VHB reviewed the traffic assessment memorandum prepared by Vanessa and Associates dated October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, and revised on January third, two thousand twenty-five. Based on the proposed plan, the project involves a construction of eighteen residential units comprised of one single-family detached unit and seventeen single-family attached units. Trip generation calculations provided in the memorandum show that the project is expected to result in an increase of nine new vehicle trips, two entering, seven exiting during the weekly morning peak hour, and eleven new vehicle trips, seven entering, four exiting during the weekday evening peak hour. Based on this level of new trip generation, the project is not expected to have significant impacts on traffic operations in the vicinity of the site. Second topic, site distance, at the November at the November twenty, two thousand twenty-four TAC meeting, the TAC raised some concerns related to intersection site distance at the proposed site driveway as well as the vehicle speeds that were reported in the original two thousand, October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four traffic assessment. The memorandum stated that traffic counts were conducted in March of two thousand twenty-four and that the eighty-fifth percentile speed was twenty-six miles per hour eastbound and twenty miles, twenty-nine miles per hour westbound. The posted speed limit in the area is thirty miles per hour. Comment was made that the pavement on Salem Street was in poor condition at the time of the council, and the road has since been repaved, which has anecdotally resulted in increased traffic vehicle speeds. The TAC suggested reviewing urban SDK speed data taken after the road was repaved to determine if vehicle speeds have increased. The urban SDK data showed a speed of thirty-five miles an hour for the section of Salem Street. In VAI's revised January three, two thousand twenty-five memorandum, the site distance analysis was updated to reflect a thirty-five mile per hour vehicle speed. Based on measurements provided in the memorandum, the minimum site distance requirements are met. The TAC noticed that the existing vegetation to the west of the proposed site driveway could potentially impede ISD if it is overgrown during certain times of the year. The proponents should commit to clearing and maintaining vegetation to ensure that adequate ISD is provided for vehicles exiting the site driveway. Based on the review of the site plan and the traffic memorandum, VHB concurs that VAI's conclusion that the project will not have significant impact on the adjacent roadways. So, we are, we're done with with traffic advisory. And I will take note on the vegetation issue, that's something that we said we would do, and I think it's something that we would need to condition, and we're open to doing that. And lastly, adding to the traffic, the, the second topic, once you're done with traffic, we're going to explain, you know, where we're going architecturally, amassing on this project, which is going to result in a reduction of units. So this traffic is only gonna have less of an impact when some of the units are reduced, and I'll get into that once you're done discussing the traffic aspects, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've seen the memo, questions, comments on traffic? Mr. Smith, the discussions with the board right now, I will get to public comment later in the meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I mean, I think this is pretty clear. You know, the bottom line says it all, based on the review of the site plan and the traffic memorandum, that the project will not have a significant impact on the adjacent roadways, I think. You know, we look at TAC as our peer consultants for these type of things, and that's always what I look for is their conclusions, so I'm good.
Same here, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to hear that they went back and just made sure that they updated their findings based on the current roadway, you know, the final roadway condition, so. After the repaving, so. I'm good.
Brian, real quick, this, this is eighteen residential, but is it eighteen or thirteen?
Well, they, they're including the new houses, Joe, that are part of the subdivision.
Okay.
We, we did, we, you know, we, we had to include everything that's gonna be constructed on the property.
Anybody else? I will agree that it was a good idea to go back because the road was in such poor shape. Obviously, I drive through town all the time as well myself, you couldn't drive very fast on that street for fear of your damaging your vehicle, so. Glad that that was done. Be interested to say, you, you're talking about eighteen units, Brian, and you reference if the board has no other further comments and questions, where are you going? That apparently sounds like eighteen units is a worst-case scenario as well.
At the end of the day, it's gonna be less than eighteen units. And, and I'll get into that, you know, once you're done with traffic. But yeah, that is the worst-case scenario, and it will, it is gonna be less.
Okay, board members, are we ready to move on for traffic, or does anyone else have any questions or comments?
All set.
I think folks are set, Brian. Move on, please.
Okay, so, the next thing I wanna talk to the board about, you know, we, we've had a lot of team meetings with our our team members, our site civil, architectural, and we've had an opportunity to kind of look at the comments of board members at the first time this was presented, also some of the folks that live in the area, and the common theme, you know, that we heard on what was presented architecturally, looks too tall, too narrow, heavy, and, you know, too tight. And so we've heard that, and, you know, what drove that, what drives that is the need to get the square footage in the units to make them marketable. So after looking at that, my, my client is going, we're in the process now of kind of doing a redo on the plan, and there's gonna be a reduction in units. And when I say a reduction in units, it might help if I share this plan. I'm gonna share the landscape plan because it kind of shows it. So what we're talking about is obviously the site with the townhomes or the attached dwellings. This is where the thirteen were proposed and this is where the discussion that they're just too narrow, they're too top heavy. Because, you know, quite frankly, we're looking to get the square footage in the units. And after, you know, hearing the board's comments and some of the neighbors' comments, what my client has decided to do. We're going to lose some of these units and what's that's going to do, it's going to allow us to spread them out. Footprint wise, so they don't have to be as high. And instead of being three stories, there'll be a two and a half story building. And there'll be less units. So what that number will be, I don't know. I can tell you, I would think after our preliminary discussions. You know, it's, it's going to be, you know, more than one or two, at least probably three. But what we're looking for at this point is to, is to work through the architectural and the layout. And the board at the last meeting had talked about possibly designating a board member to work with us in that regard, which you have in the past. And, you know, we would like the board to consider doing that so we can kind of get some input as we go along because there's a lot of. Lot of money that's going to be spent on a redesign here and we'd rather. Have a designated member to make sure we're going in the right direction instead of just throwing arrows in the dark. But I think it's. I think it's going to be a much better, better looking project from what the board was asking for and get rid of that mansad look. Top heavy type look that we consistently heard at the last meeting.
Well, we'll talk about that as a board as we close out for tonight and I'm sure that someone. Chip will probably volunteer for it. So we'll, we'll, we'll make that happen. We agree, we'd rather see you work with a board member. To refine it than come back here and be throwing darts every time you come back. So. Okay. Well, that's good to hear that you're listening. It's good to hear that there'll be a reduction in units that you, you heard the board, you heard the board on the architecture, you heard the board on the massing. And the number of units as well as obviously some neighbors that had said the same thing. Anything else for tonight, Mister McGrath?
No, we're still working with neighbors. We've had a couple of meetings and discussions if any of the neighbors are on that, you know. My client has met with, we have not forgotten you and, you know, we will be back in touch. But this redesign also has, you know, impact on the drainage study that's going to have to be refined. And so it has, that's why there's a lot of moving parts to it.
Okay. Anything else, board members, before I throw it open to the public? Hearing saying none, at this point, I'm going to turn it open to the public. I'm going to ask folks that are testifying to address what they've heard tonight in terms of evidence presented. There will be other meetings. It's, we're gonna, obviously, you heard the applicant's attorney. We're gonna come back and look at architecture and massing and location of the massing. With those townhouse units in the back. So if you could. Keep your comments to mostly the traffic was the main portion of the presentation tonight, that would be appreciated. I see Scott Hanley on my screen is the first one in line here.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Testify if you could just provide me your address. That'd be much appreciated.
Of course. Thank you, Mister Chair, Scott Hanley, five Toby Lane. I would echo your comments and just say, thank you for listening. To the neighbors and also, of course, the board on the massing and the number of units. We do appreciate that. My other comment is just a question. On the vegetation, who? And the increase in speed to thirty five, you know, change the site. The sight lines coming out of the driveway. Who, who clears the vegetation after all the units are built and sold? What is the process for that?
Mister McGrath?
Yeah, I can. Yep, it will be, it will be a restriction, Mister Hanley, on the property. That the, that the property owners or homeowners association would be required to do it. If then, if they don't do it, then the town has a right of entry to do it and to charge them for the cost.
Okay, so that's a, that's an H O A thing. Would that be just the, the units on the corner or all of these units?
I have to, I don't, it will have to be worked out on how that's going to work, Scott. I'm not sure yet, but it will either be, and usually. You know, it certainly has to be. You know, the way it's been done in the past is it would be a requirement of the H O A, but it would also be a requirement of all of the owners. And that way, if it's not done, you know, the problem with an H O A is they don't have any money. So, so if the town's got to go after somebody, they want to be able to go after the property owners jointly and separately, if they can go after all of them or any of them. So it really gives them some heavy incentive to comply.
Okay.
But that, that's a good question and we'll work that out in detail.
All right, thank you. That's all I had, Mister Chair.
Yeah, Brian, we don't know where this is going yet, but if eventually gets to a point where it's going to be approved, whether or not that happens, who knows, but. That's something that you, we're going to want to see conditioned heavily or somehow work into. Some form of legal form that the town has a hammer to enforce. Okay. I see next up is Edward Smith. Mister Smith, you're on mute. If you could come off mute and give me your address too, please.
I'm the about her on the east side. I'm on one sixty two Salem Street. And I heard the, the board's traffic assessment. But I didn't hear much about in terms of any safety issues. I'm happy to see it's starting to be worked on that you're reducing a few of the. The, of the development, but it's still. Unarguably the busiest traveled, highest speed. Road in a residential area. You have busier streets, of course. But not in residential areas. And now with the sidewalks, you have people walking their dogs. There's a lot of kids in the area. And it's already bad the way it is. And now with the increase in traffic to thirty five miles an hour. I mean, it just seems like it's, there's more bad things that can happen than good. Has this already been signed off on from a, a safety and? And.
So Mister Smith, what happens is with a project like this, the, the applicant files a, a traffic assessment study. With the town's traffic advisory committee. The town's traffic advisory committee is chaired by Lieutenant Anderson of the Wakefield Police Department. It also, as a member, has Chief Sullivan from the Wakefield Fire Department. And it has a couple of citizens as well as Bill Renault from the Wakefield D P W department. And usually the town manager, Steve Mayo sits in on it as well. So they go through that traffic assessment. They look, as you saw, they look at sight lines, they look at speed, they look at location, they look at all. The number of vehicles entering and exiting thing and they do a full safety analysis. And what you, that memo that Mister McGrath put on the screen tonight. Is the combined input from Wakefield Police, Wakefield Fire, Wakefield D P W. And the citizens that serve on Wakefield's Traffic Advisory Committee. As Board Member Tarbell said, our board relies heavily on those public safety experts to tell us. What is safe and what works for that. So what they basically said tonight is what you saw is that they, they don't see any issues. With the development as filed right now. And then you, but you also heard Mister McGrath say that there'll be less units than was there. So. That's even better news for potential impacts, so.
Now, has this already been signed off on?
No, we have not. We're, we're, we haven't adjudicated the case. We're going through every aspect of the. The proposed project. Tonight, we, we're discussing traffic and the input from our traffic public safety experts. That was the subject for tonight. As you heard, in the future, they're redesigning the whole. Townhouse portion of the development. They're reducing the number of units. We'll certainly. Be taking a good look at that. We'll be taking a look at site civil. We'll be taking a look at lighting, landscaping. And all elements of the project. And once we have all the evidence and have looked at every aspect of. The proposed project, including the input we had on traffic tonight. Will then make a decision as a board whether or not we would approve this project. Or this application, I should say.
And I just want to know, want you to know for the public record, it's not that I live right next to it. That's my concern. Hard to believe, but I'm really worried about the safety. I think safety should be number one. Especially now with the sidewalks. And if you lived around here, I think you'd get a better grasp of the situation of the high travels of speed. People slamming on their brakes. More might happen at night than you think. But you hear a lot of crashes and things like that already. So I just don't want to see somebody get hurt. That's my main concern. I'd like to know who, who finalizes this deal. Just for public knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, we just, yeah, just to add, in addition to all your comments. We also get a peer consultant, right? V H B responded to their Vanessa and Associates. So in addition, all the town folks. We have a traffic expert that reviews their. Assessment. So just from a traffic standpoint and parking and safety. You know, we rely on them, as you noted, and from that perspective. It seems okay for now. The project could still change and we'll see if there's any updates, but.
Yep.
We're clearly not done. Yeah, just from traffic, it's gonna be okay for now, but we're not done, clearly.
And Mister Smith, what I would say about speeds is this project or this application doesn't own the, the speed on the roads. That's a Wakefield Police Department. Issue that needs to be worked with. So we can't control that. So. But I appreciate your comments. Next, I see on the screen, it says Paul Lovano. I'm sorry for massacring that last name.
Hi, Annie Lovano with my husband, Paul. We are at one six eight Salem Street. We are next door to the Smiths. I, I agree with what Ed said about the area. Mainly because I don't think people understand how thickly settled and how much pedestrian and animal and kid traffic we get with the sidewalks, which is great. And. This is the path to the lake. And we can second and third the fact that you often hear screeching tires in the middle of the night. The dogs go, no, it's a regular thing. So can vouch for that. My primary comment and concern is actually, I'm happy to hear about the reduction of the number of units. Because one of my greatest concerns is how this is going to impact the flooding situation on New Salem. We eat breakfast every weekend on New Salem and that's where our car mechanics are. And that street is a problem when it rains or in the spring with snow melt. And the. Area that they're looking at developing is turning what is currently two acres of undeveloped floodplain adjacent to wetland. And covering it in concrete. And if we have those problems now with all of that being open green space where rainwater and, and snow melt is absorbed by. Old growth trees and, and whatnot. I really, really am sincerely concerned about what's going to happen when you've lost two acres of, of land. To concrete and I, I, I don't think I can under emphasize how can, how much this concerns me with flooding down there. It's. Yeah, I think that's a re, it's just a really big concern. And the wildlife impacts, to be honest. There's a very, very healthy coyote pack in those woods and. People keep complaining about them, but this is what happens when where they live is, is taken away. I mean, it's, it's adjacent to the floodplain. So. I'm not sure how much more we can take from our natural resources before things start to get kind of nasty. That's all. I, it's just a concern.
No, we hear you and, and similar to what happens with traffic, the town's engineers. There are stormwater reports. There are lots of reports that they have to work with the town engineers. They work with issues that, that you mentioned that you're concerned about. We rely heavily, obviously, on our D P W department in that regard and our engineers. And they will issue us a report that the board will take into consideration as we consider the application. If there's significant concerns, we can always ask one of the town engineers to attend one of the meetings. They have done that for us in the past. So you can talk to them directly as well. I'm happy to try to set that up for you at a future meeting when we're discussing site civil issues and flooding. Concerns, happy to do that, so.
Thank you. I know that they're going to be doing another drainage study, so I just wanted to point this out before they do that. So it's. On everybody's mind is a potential, just a problem that needs to be solved.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, anybody else from the public that would? Going once. Going twice. Okay, closing public comment. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
But do we have our plan of attack for next meeting? Brian, architectural updates potentially, like three weeks is, I mean, I assume we're going to continue for three weeks, you know, till February twelfth. And what's next? Get those architectural updates maybe and what else?
I think, I think Dave, we want to appoint one of our own to help guide their architectural journey here.
I have to read for the night right now.
And I'm nominating one Chip Tarbell to, to serve in that role. But folks comfortable with Chip taking that on. I'd rather just do one because if we do two, then we have to advertise the meetings.
I'd rather keep it at one.
It gets hard to coordinate and.
That way I don't have to watch my language on a recorded meeting.
Okay, I, I would second that and that's fine. Okay.
To that end, I would think that in three weeks we would be able to come back with something, Brian. Even if it's just conceptual. Brian?
Brian, you're on mute.
Yeah, there's a, there's a big gap between meetings here because of the way that the, the calendar works. So I think three weeks is fine.
I'm around those three weeks. I'm not going anywhere, so.
And Brian, you heard the concern about flooding. So as you. Do your massing. And adjust it and redo your stormwater report. I'd like you to pass that along to the town engineer.
Yeah, we.
Obviously said to him that, that folks want to see him. Phil's usually pretty good about coming to a meeting, so. If you could just learn that there's some concern about that as, as you go into those issues with him.
Yeah, we, we hear all the comments as we did on the massing and we respect them and. You know, I, I, I'd cite, I'd cite civil is probably getting more aggravated than anybody because, anybody because he can't finalize his. His drainage study until we get a layout of, you know, what the units are going to do because it's, it's all tied in together. So, so this is, this is a work in progress. We also, to remind you, we, we have to file with the Conservation Commission on this also. We have to file with them because we've got to determine what our layout is going to be because we, we don't want to, you know, we keep redoing the drainage study in front of different boards and having to revise it. So we want to narrow that down. So there'll be a. There'll be a notice of intent that has to be filed with the Conservation Commission on this project as well. And we're also before the planning board, as you know, so, you know, there's a lot of coordination. And, and I think you can see, we're not looking to, we're not looking to rush a project. My client owns this, owns both of these properties. He wants to get it right. And, and that's why we're listening and taking the time and submitting. The information and materials that the board needs to, to work with us and to review it properly and hopefully get things right at the end of the day.
Yep, and I'll remind you before Chip speaks up that it's great for this board if you wrap up your con con and your planning board. And then come, we finish up here so that we have all our detail. We have their. Their comments and conditions that. Will shape how we adjudicate our case here.
Yeah, this, if the project ends up moving forward at all three boards, usually what we'll do is keep it open at all three boards until all boards are satisfied and coordinated if, if it goes in a positive direction. In that, in that way, you know, because the, the worst thing would be to get, you know, approvals from different boards that conflict with each other. That just doesn't work.
Yep, that's all I'm trying to prevent. Okay. Anything else, board members? Anything else, board members? Mister McGrath, any final concerns or thoughts that you have before we close this out for the evening?
No.
All right, I'll leave it to you and Chip to to connect and. And move that forward on the architectural end and the massing end. All right.
Mister Chair, I move that we continue this matter at one fifty-four and one fifty-eight Salem Street to our February twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Seconded. Would you also?
Oh, and to appoint Chip Tarbell as a representative of the board to work with the applicant offline between now and then on um, architectural and other aspects of the site.
Perfect.
Second the amended motion.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion hearing, seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Matter's continued. Thank you for the presentation. All right, moving right along, other matters, twenty-one Princess Street, Ellie's Pizza Wakefield signage discussion.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Hello? Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is, yeah.
Go ahead, go right ahead, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, my name is Andrew Kuhlmann. I'm the owner and a business partner of the twenty-one, nineteen twenty-one Princess Street. On the first floor, um, we're opening uh, pizza place, Ellis Pizza in Wakefield. Um, the first floor was the former Thai place. It's been, was closed for about a year. Um, and we purchased the whole building and we plan on opening on the first floor a pizza place. We have passed through all of the um, pyramids and inspections for the, with the, with the town. And the only last one is the sign. Uh, our grand opening is planned for uh, this coming Monday, actually, so. Uh, we're hoping to resolve this matter tonight. I'm gonna, if it's okay, Mister Chair, can I share my screen? So I can.
Yeah, please do. Yep.
Okay. So. The uh, can you guys see my screen?
We can.
So the existing sign uh, right now is the one on the left. There will be no changes to it in terms of dimension. The only thing that's changing is the middle of it. We're gonna put our logo. The logo is pretty uh, basic is um, of it's, I can describe it as a vinyl sticker right on top of it. The letters on the food cat, uh, and this little flower, they're all, they were all um. Uh, they were nailed to the board, so we're gonna remove the letters and just uh, put this black sticker that has our our logo on it. I will share my screen for. Uh, just to give you um, a better view of how it looks. There's actually two signs on the property. One is on um. I think this is the, this the, this one is on Princess Street. It's on both side, front and back. As you can see, the flower and the letters are popping out. They're just nailed with a little nail, so we're gonna remove this and just put the sticker on top of it. There will be no changes to the dimension whatsoever. The other location of the, of the sign is right by the entrance. And this is just a one-sided sign. There will be no changes to lighting. There'll be no changing to um, the, the main. Uh, board of where the letters are, it's just a sticker that's gonna go on top of it. And it's pretty basic. Um, let me know if you have any questions, concern. But it's, it's a pretty straightforward um, sticker.
Hey, thank you, uh. Board members, any comments, questions?
Mister Chair. Can you did um, give a, give a little more information on what sticker means?
So it's a, it's basically a vinyl cut out at, on the both, uh, as the, the full side of the sign. It's basically a vinyl cut out with adesin in the back. Uh, right now, um, and it's, it's oval shape, just like it's, it's set up. It's just gonna go right on top of it and it's gonna be perfectly flat.
And that's gonna be permanent?
Uh, yes, it's for outdoor use, correct. We didn't wanna go fancy putting um, um, putting a neon sign and all that stuff. We just said, most of the advertising that the pizza will do is online. Uh, this is just um, a way of having the, the logo. Viewed on from the main street, cause right now there is no, no logo that you can uh, view the, the, the pizza place from the main street.
So you have, I'm sorry, the raisedness right now is like the, the star and the flower. Those are like. Screwed on now and you're just gonna pop those off and put a sticker on it?
Yeah, so, so those are, they're not screwed on, they're just um, attached with little nails. They pop out. Actually, as a matter of fact, one of the, one of the flowers already fell because of the weather. Um, our logo is just a sticker that will go on it. It's, it's very basic. It's just, we just needed to, so people can see it when they walk by. That's it. There's gonna be no lighting and the lighting's gonna stay the same, the size is the same. It's, it's pretty basic.
I, it, it sounds very temporary and kind of cheap. To be honest, not, not to be too much, but it, I've just never heard, we have too many temporary signs in this town.
Uh, it's not gonna be temporary, it's gonna be permanent. If, if we, the, the um. The paper and the material is for outdoor use. Uh, but again, if we see that, um, and and we, we can have an open discussion. The, the biggest challenge that we had with this is I tried to reach out to the former company that did this, which is down the street. And send multiple emails, nobody turned my calls. When they're, I don't know if they even um, in the business. And then I consulted with the, with another firm and they told me what's the purpose of the sign. Are you, you gonna need a, a neon sign? Is it gonna be um, something fancy? And we said it's just a pizza place. It's not a fancy Italian restaurant that you want something that will catch your eye. Just a matter of um, just a basic sign. But again, if, if you, if it's something that's not gonna hold. Temp, uh, for, for a long time, we can certainly look into a more fancier sign. But again, the point was not to change the dimensions. I know you guys are very specific with the dimension and how it's set up right now. So we wanted to keep the same, the same dimensions and just get a temporary um. Not a temporary, put, put something that's simple and will do the job. We're very practical people. We wanna get the pizza up and running. And we have, we wanna have our logo so people can see where the place is.
So Mister Chair, just piggyback on Ricky's saying and I'm happy to like reuse the sign, reuse the bracket, keep the same shape, no problem there. No lighting, that's fine. Um, I just would also question, where is the sticker coming from? Like?
It's a comp, uh huh, yeah, that's.
All it, I just, I would be concerned. We have an opportunity here. You're bringing a new business into town. We, we, we obviously encourage that. We're happy to have a new business in town, especially if you bring in a good product. Um, we'd just like to see a nice sign. And if it's cheaply done, then it, it may reflect early on, on that. So we just wanna make sure it's done right and it looks nice. And typically, we just look for quality stuff, right? Whether, and and so what's there now is fine. If you cover it with something that looks nice and it, you know, is weather resistant, it may be fine. It's just hard to know. Cause this is the first time I've heard of a sign like this, rather than taking that wooden bracket off and just making something just like it, but with your logo on it. And putting it on that bracket is typically what we would have seen. Not putting a sticker on it, sticker.
Right.
I just wanna make sure it's good quality.
That's a good point. Um, I, I also have a business, uh, a separate business that does um, events and decor. And the company that I'm using is the company that I use to make uh, all of the, the decor that I do for um, events. They're, they're very, um, it's a, it's a US, it's a US company that's um, it's called Sticker Mule. Um, it's a, it's the, the materials that they use, it's very high quality. And just, just to get a, just so you can get an idea, cause you, you pay what you get for. The two stickers were worth like four hundred dollars. Um, so when, once we remove the um, the, the name and the flower. And this sticker goes right on top of it, the sign I guarantee you will look much nicer than what's, what, what is looking now. Um, so I strongly believe that it is a pretty, it's gonna be a pretty good looking sign. If you guys want me to look at us um, a three D version of it, where we can be. Build our logo and put our logo on top of that, I can certainly do that. But the main goal for us right now is we just wanna, wanna open the, the pizza place and get up and running. This is not. It's uh, it's, it's just a pizza place. We wanna make sure that it's, it's, it does the job. People know where it is. Um, this, if, I call it a sticker, but it's, it's a pretty good material. I think you'll be happy once you see it. And and feel free, if you don't like what, what, what you see, we can certainly come back and um, do a, come up with a different solution. But I guarantee you, you will like it.
Yeah, my, my problem, Mister Chair, is that we spent, you know, I'm, I'm, I think it's great that we're reusing the signage that's there. I have no problem with the vinyl. I've seen it happen before. I've, I, I, I know it's weather resistant. I know my problem being is we spent a lot of time with the raised nature, with the raised letters, the raised flower. And now we're just going to a flat surface. We're not, we're down, not that it's, the logo doesn't look nice. I'm fine with the logo. I'm fine with everything. However. We spent a lot of time getting a raised feature out of the hanging bracket sign as well as the sign by the door. Now we're eliminating that. I mean, I would have been much happier if you would come in and said, I'm putting a vinyl over it. The pizza's gonna be a raised pizza slice. My names are gonna have raised letters and it's gonna look very similar. But instead you've come back and said, it's gonna be flat. I understand your need to get open. Um. But I would love to see a raised feature in the future.
Yeah, I wonder if there's a middle ground, middle ground here. I am sympathetic to him trying to get open.
Yeah.
And I wonder if there's some way we can give him some time period to, to use what he's talking about. With the idea that we get something more permanent in the future, but to let him get up and going. Uh, that I agree, that, that lo, that location needs a marker, right? He, he's absolutely right there. You can't find that unless from Main Street, you know, you'll go right by. So the only place you really see that from is from the parking lot right out in front of uh, you know, the Public Safety Building. So. Uh, I, 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 I don't disagree with what I've heard from other board members, but I wonder if we can get him open and, and get him up and running and.
And Mister Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
What is the purpose of the raised uh, feature? Just out of curiosity. Just so I know for my personal um.
The raised feature?
Yes.
From a perspective of design, it gives you a shadow effect. It gives you, when lights hit it, it looks a little different. It's just a classier, better look. Some people do it in a carved ma- manner. Some people do it in raised letters. Um, it's better than just a flat surface because of shadows. The way lights work on it. It, we've spent a lot of time in, in the town upgrading our signage. To raise letter, to the raised flower, to the, to the, that. And you're going to a flat sticker. Is going backwards, not even staying the same.
Um, the lights will still hit it, but I do get your point. I see what you mean.
There's no shadow, there's no shadow effect, there's no, there's no feel towards it. It's, it's a flat sign. Um.
Yeah.
It's, it's allowed because you're using the same, same everything. Uh, Mister Chair, to your point. I'd love to, you know, give it six months and have him come back and see if the pizza place is doing well. We might be able to upgrade the signage a little bit.
How do board members feel about something like that?
That gives the board a chance to see what the um, sign looks like installed that he's proposing.
I, I would recommend having a sign company come in and do it instead of having him do it himself. I mean, if you have a reputable sign company, at least you know it's, you know, done right.
So, yes, and thank you for that. I wanted to go with the existing company that did that sign. Unfortunately, no one returned my call and I've been chasing them since Christmas. It's ridiculous, so. Um, and I lost so much time going after them. I lost a month, cause I went personally uh, at their offices. They promised me that they will get me a draft and they'll get me a quote. And to this day, I never heard from them, even though I, I have proof of my emails and voice messages. Um, so after losing almost one month with them, um, now we have our grand, grand opening next Monday. We kinda um, got stuck with, with uh, this solution. And, and this solution was something that we, we were hoping to go with that company, but you know, unfortunately we had to compromise and. I, I really appreciate the opportunity for the six months. I honestly think you like that um, uh, sign. But again, I can go back, I can create a pretty nice, for six months, I can hire a company, do a very nice sign also. Um, but with your permission, can we change to a round shape instead of an oval shape? That's the other question that I have. Or is it, does it have to stay with the same dimension that we have right now? Cause I can come back with a full-on plan for a new sign. Is it something you'll be open to that?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with doing this for six months and see where you stand. And then during that six-month period, you can come back. With a redesign from a sign company and, I mean, pretty much the same dimensions, you can't make it. But it's kind of the same square footage would be fine with me. I don't know.
Our logo at the other location, we have another location up in Beverly Farms. It's a round shape. So we wanted to do a round shape and then because.
It looks like a pizza. Funny thing about that, huh?
Yes. But um, so yeah, okay, that, that's actually better for us.
It is a matter of whether the other board, it's not a done deal yet.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's fine. I, I'm okay with it.
I'm one for solid five.
And then I'll, can be back with a, with a better round shape solution with lighting, whatever. It's, it's okay.
That works for me and I was actually gonna ask if you're related to the one in Beverly. So.
Yes.
How long have you been in Beverly?
Uh, the location in Beverly has been around for a while, but we have owned it for about uh, three and a half years now.
Okay. So it's established. Yeah, that's good.
Yes, yes, yeah. Um, yeah, and I urge you to, if you drive by there, the, their sign over there is, it's um, I, it's way too much. But I put, it's like, my partners think it's beautiful, but it's too much for me, but with the neon lighting and all that stuff. But we will do something nice in Wakefield, um, and try to accommodate our request for the board. It's fine.
Works for me, Mister Chair. Get them up and running and we work on something that. It's something that we'd be looking for to, to be consistent with what we've got going on around town.
All right, uh, it's another matter, so I don't feel like we have to open up to the public uh, here and I don't think anyone's here to actually even look at. So with that, you know. You know, six months from February first is. You know, type of thing.
Yep.
So I'd be looking for a motion. With date specific.
So Mister Chair, I would, I would move that we um, prove the applicant's request to um. Change the sign as, as provided in their um, memorandum to us dated January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Um, to apply this um, this vinyl sticker or whatever the material is to the uh, existing signage. Uh, the bracket sign and the wall signs at the property at twenty-one Princess Street with the stipulation that they come back in six months' time. Um, say by August first, could be sooner if they have something, but by August first, twenty twenty-five, uh, with something um. Uh, more substantial, um, that. Uh, more substantial um that fits their. Um. Their good their brand and it fits into that um site and is more consistent with what uh we'd be looking for um around our our signage in town. So that's my motion. The only thing Dave, but I might ask you to amend your motion to have filed something in time for our August meeting. Which probably won't be the first, it'll probably be a couple of weeks, a week or ten days later. Okay, well, our meeting would be not even August first, right, so. Alright, that's what I mean, we'd probably be mid-August, so maybe say.
Play for our August meeting, right?
For our August meeting. Okay. No, no later, to your point, no later than our August meeting. Right, so I would amend the motion to say that they come back um. With something in uh time for our August meeting, um. No later than that, again, could be sooner if they're ready, but no later than that.
Second, the amended motion.
Hey, motion's been made, second, any further discussion? Guarantee non-regular voting members, Dave. Yes. Joe.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Well, good luck, uh, look forward to seeing an updated sign some point in the future, but good luck with your opening and in your business.
Thank you all, appreciate it, have a great night, thank you.
You too. Thank you. Good luck. All right, that covers that, we are on to clerk and board comments. Um, Joe, as you're thinking about, I I I would just uh jump in here and say. We filed both forty B decisions yesterday. So they are done, they are filed. We'll see where where it all goes from here. Um, you know, they have a certain amount of time to. Appeal if they so choose and uh I'm sure we'll find out in due time. If uh that's the course that either one of those applicants goes. Uh, the second thing I had up for tonight is a reminder. Um, the filing deadline for vacancies on the board. Of which this year is Mickey and Joe. The filing deadline is February fourth, which is coming up quicker than you think, so I don't know if you guys have. Got your applications in or not, but you should certainly be thinking about that. Um, cause that time's coming up.
Mister Chair, I I I sent an email to you, um. Maybe, I don't know if you read it, um, I will not be re-upping for the next um three years. So I know I end in April.
Yeah. I don't know if I got that email, Mickey.
I would have known about that one.
Went right to junk mail.
Um, might have been workman uh emailed, but.
Yeah, I'll relook for that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's sad news.
It it it's sad to say, um, but it's there's. It's scheduling more than anything else and a lot of things, so.
Oh, you're not running for town council or anything? Well, you know, this board has been a, it's been a springboard for other counselors in the past.
Oh, I I saw that, but um. But I don't know, the the company I keep on this board, it might drag me down.
Absolutely.
Anyway, um. I I I'm I'm upset, I you didn't get that, I was wondering why you didn't, I I thought you were just, oh, well.
Maybe he's just. And he really did get it, but.
Yeah, maybe I was. Right, cause I did call you back, I saw you called and then I I called you back, I didn't um. We never connected.
Um, I I just, um, seven years, I think it's time for somebody else to step up, uh, not to step up, everybody on this board step up, but for somebody else to take the chair.
Okay.
Alright, well, we'll have you through April.
Yeah.
Alright.
Other things that I got, two other things, uh, I've asked Gail, you know, we wanna get together for the holidays and obviously now to celebrate uh Mickey's final few months, so. Uh, we usually wait to try to work that around Gail's schedule and so I'm waiting to hear back from her on that. Uh, and then um you folks might have seen uh Samantha Elliott. Uh, who's our town planner, is working on a bylaw, uh, an ADU bylaw, she's got a draft of that, that she's been kind of. Shopping around. Um, I invited her to a meeting, we're just trying to pin a date down. Do you guys have a preferred date? Um, if you wanna see her on. What was our next meeting, the twelfth?
So Mister Chairman, as we talk about next meetings, when are we going back in public? The safety public room works great, I had a PVC meeting there, it's easy as can be to get on. It could, it's both there and remote, I think that we do so much that, you know, seeing plans on a table and. It we just, I think we do better, uh, it's been great, but I think we do better in person often. Especially when it's signage or things we need to see, um, I would love to go back in person.
Yep, I'm with you. Um, I'll I'll press again, um, I'll talk to Gail about it again, I agree, I don't, I'd much prefer in person to Zoom. It's a complete mystery why we haven't, when so many other boards.
I think everybody else has gone back.
So, yeah, complete mystery, agreed. I'm with you. Um, but in terms of your point eight, i- is this a bylaw, a zoning bylaw for the town in. Concert with what's going on at the state, isn't there a state level? Yeah, they 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 have to, they've got some work to do on it, but. But if if there's people in town hall working on something, this is the board that deals with it and the building department's the department that deals with them. I think we should be front and center on this thing. Okay, so, but it would have to be run through the planning board as usual for any zoning change, so you're thinking, come here first for some initial thoughts? Before. She's already gone to the planning board. Oh. Okay, I missed that in the paper. I missed that. So.
The planning board is not that held public meetings on it yet.
Mickey, are we picking up background noise, I think, sorry. So. I'm sorry, I'm I'm missing it, Mister Chair. So in her, I I reached out to her and said initially. I've heard there's two things going on. The ADU and the signage that we talked about. She wrote back, said, yes, I'm working on both. And I'd be happy to to come before the board, so I communicated again with her today. And today, she said she has be happy to share. An initial draft that has input from the planning board, department heads and others. I did write her back and say, we would love to have you, I'm gonna talk to my board about a date. And I'm curious about planning board, department heads and others. Uh, so I said, we can talk about that when you come to our board, cause I I don't know if she's reached out as individual, Dave. Or if they've had time set aside of the planning board, I don't know any of that either. I'm just trying to get her before us to explain the process and what her thinking is on, right, I'm with you, wh- where does she stand with the state? Uh, what is she hearing things that we're not, because. Um, you know, our only source on this for us. Folks is to what we see in the Globe and the Herald, right? Um. Okay, and if that's fine, so, so if not the twelfth, then the meeting after that, if she's looking. As long as, can she send us a draft, so we have a chance, we're not just coming to the meeting blind as usual? As long as we get something in advance, so we can review it, yeah. She sent it, it said in the address line that it was Board of Appeals, so I assumed that everybody got that email that she sent me today.
I got it, Tom, but I got it through uh bylaw review committee, so I I have it too, I can send it out.
Okay, I will, I'll I'll circulate that, so she has given it to us. So why don't we have her in on?
The other thing we found, Tom, when we did the bylaw review subcommittee joint meeting. Was that she was working on signage. And had no idea of any of the previous drafts. That Jim McBane or anybody else had done, so we sent her. A copy of what Jim had come up with, which was pretty much finished. Um, my my note is, what I'm scared about is that. A lot of people are trying to simplify the whole signage issue, I think we've worked so hard. I know it's a complicated subject, but I think we've worked so hard to try to. Better our signage, that I don't wanna go backwards. So I'm a little shocked and dismayed that we're hearing about this second and third hand and with a zoning board. To be honest.
I'd even like to see a draft of that, if it's available, I don't. I.
Joe. Joe, you wanna send Dave a draft of the signage?
Yeah, I got.
Trust my new Jim, I couldn't send. Ate me and Joe sat next to me during the bylaw sign review, I pulled it up, he took my phone and sent it to everybody. We all know this is not one of my. So feel free to send that around to us, Joe.
I'll send the eighty year one, so Joe isn't cast as uh chip secretary here.
He is clerk, I mean, he's gotta do something other than just read.
Alright, thank you, thanks for those updates. Yeah. Yeah, that's what I got, um. And I'll I'll have Gail put it on the agenda so we can have a full discussion of it all too, without any concern about. Um. Open meeting law stuff, so. And Joe, I don't know if you have anything else?
No, I mean, you um, I I got something from. Uh, Sherry about re-up and so I sent my application, I think, last week, so. That's it.
Okay. But you'll follow up with her with any other applicants that come through, right, so we'll have a chance to. See who else may have applied for the seats. And, yeah, and folks be thinking about people, it's only a few weeks away.
But remember that alternate members that are interested in full-time have to apply. It's not.
Yes, even if your term's up, so Kirsten or Greg, if you wanna apply, now that you know Mickey's stepping aside.
Um, and Tom, my apologies, I I had written it to Thomas dot Lucy at H dot E D. Um, I just just sent it again, but.
Act surprised when you read it, Tom.
They are they still doing interviews again, is that still, is that on, back on, is it off?
Who knows?
No. Different everywhere now.
But Kirsten and Greg, back in the back, there was a time when someone would get voted on and. They would become an alternate and one of the the most senior alternate would just move into the. Available full and they just don't do it that way anymore, you have to, I think, actually apply. To fill the the open seat.
Cause Sue me too, cause I think, cause Sue was an alternate, right, so.
Yeah, all three of you, yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah. But yeah, sorry. Yeah. To do it, though, you have to actually file. You can't. Yeah. You won't slide in, like Sue me would be the most senior, right, so she would, back in the old day. That would conceivably happen, but it just doesn't happen anymore. It doesn't happen, the town council, I'm not prepared to.
Don't go there.
Say what they're gonna. I'm just saying, back in the day, there was a time when it may have happened that way, it doesn't.
Tom can speak from experience.
Well, they said it would happen and then they didn't do it.
Right, no. No. Alright, so that's all I got. Uh, it'd be nice to be done before nine o'clock with the Bruins on in the Celtics, the West Coast. There are no minutes though for the eighth, I assume, so we didn't get those, right, so it's it's on the agenda, but there are no minutes from the eighth yet, so. No, I tell you, we, yeah, poor Gail and we have, we were in, there was a lot that had to get done to get those decisions filed and uh. That was the priority, we have draft minutes that are. That are pretty solid, that I'm sure we'll be ready for our next um. Our next meet. Sounds good.
There's so much in those minutes that. A lot.
Mister Chair, motion adjourned. It's always in order, thank you so much, we don't need to vote on that, we just need to say, good night, everybody. Thank you.